Our Cookville City Council meeting for Thursday, June 20th to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji, here. Councilman Walker, here. Mayor Wheaton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge, here. Councilman Gilbert, here. Five press.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Minister Micah Johnson from the Rippin Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here we gather tonight for the city meeting, Father Council meeting. I pray for the members here that they may deliberate in your guidance and your spirit, Lord, and may that everything that they do, your righteous in your sight. Jesus name we pray.
Thank you, Micah. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
No changes, Mother.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Four A, consider appointments to the Cookville Tree Board. Um, you want me to read those off names?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have got, um, some upcoming appointments to the Tree Board here, and we have got Mr. Austin Sanders, Mr. Tony Stone, Mr. Guy Zimmerman, and Mr. Douglas Earhart, who have said they would serve and have been recommended by the Tree Board. So I will ask for a motion to approve those appointments to the Tree Board.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All right, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Four B, consider appointment to the Cookville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, the term of service for Dr. Ernest Buchanan as a physician member on the Cook Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees is expiring. Um, the Cook Regional Medical Staff has nominated Dr. Burton Gere as his replacement. The term of service is for seven years, and I request your approval of the nomination and the appointment of Dr. Gere to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public on this? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 6, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0615, providing a tax levy for the city of Cookville, Tennessee for fiscal year into June 30th, 2025, providing means for the collection of revenues and establishing the due dates and delinquency dates for property taxes. Ms. Emel.
Council members, this ordinance establishes the tax rate for the 2024 property tax, providing revenue for our fiscal year 25 budget. We are proposing no tax increase. The ordinance sets the rate at 92 cents. It is estimated to provide about $11,64,000 in revenue. 62 cents will go to the general fund, 12 and a half cents to transportation infrastructure fund, two cents to debt service, five and a half cents to solid waste, five cents to State Street A, four cents to economic development, and one cent to quality of life. There have been no changes to the ordinance since first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. This is a public hearing, so we will open up the portion for the public hearing. Is anyone like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion. Any discussion from the council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0616, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofits, and charitable organizations for the fiscal year into June 30th, 2025. Ms. Emel.
Council members, um, let me go back here. Yes, this ordinance appropriates $926,450 to various public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for fiscal year 25, $766,450 for our governmental partners and joint ventures, and $160,000 was allocated as recommended by the nonprofit committee. Um, $407,000 is allocated to the Putnam County Library. That's the most significant amount in the ordinance. We have made no changes to the ordinance since our first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. This is also a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this agenda item? Okay, is there any discussion from the council? All right, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five D, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0617, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, for the city of Cookville, Tennessee. Ms. Emel.
Council members, this ordinance provides for the adoption of our fiscal year 25 budget for all of our funds. We have made no changes to the ordinance since our first reading. We have gone over it in great detail at our budget work session and at first reading. Um, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of things in the budget for you, um, for our second public hearing. Um, jump ahead of some slides here. Um, so for our employees citywide, this budget includes a market adjustment of 50 cents an hour and a performance evaluation merit of up to four cent, four percent for certified police officers and firefighters, and up to two percent for all other employees. The budget also provides, um, funds for a longevity bonus. And let me jump way ahead here. Way more ahead. Anyhow, um, the general fund. There we go. The general fund budget, um, has a budget of appropriation for total revenue and transfers in of $38,805,000. The largest source of our revenue is sales tax, and we're budgeting an increase of two percent in that. Um, appropriations for the general fund are $44,280,000. That includes operating expenditures, capital expenditures, and transfers out. We're projecting to end next fiscal year with a, um, fund balance of a little over $34 million. Um, next slide I wanted to point out. That one? The general improvement bond fund, we are, um, budgeting over $28 million in large projects. That includes, um, $9,300,000 for a fire station rebuilds, the CPAC project, leisure services facility in the parking lot behind it. We put $2 million in there for the Kane Creek project. We're looking at plans for, um, improving parking lot and splash pad, and then our street improvements that we have ongoing, the West Stevens Project and Penn Street Phase Two, and then looking at starting plans for Phase Three. And then just a reminder, in our solid waste fund, we are budgeting a commercial rate increase of 12% that will be implemented in the fall to cover the increasing cost of providing that service. And then we'll jump ahead to the very last slide. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the funds that you may have. And then the final slide, this ordinance then budgets a total for all of our funds of revenues of $173,285,000, and then proposed expenditures of $234,67,000. And again, we've made no changes since first reading, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, but recommend your approval.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Walker. This is also a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this? Okay, any discussion from the council?
I'd just like to say thank you for all your hard work. Uh, we, we've seen this, I don't know how many times we've looked through this and spent hours and hours and hours studying this, um, it, you know, and I just appreciate, I know for every hour we put into it, you've put
Ten.
Ten, so, probably, or more. Um, and so it's just, it's to see it all come together and have our city kind of grow with this kind of budget, and we're really fortunate to have as much sales tax as we do to contribute to everybody in Cookville and not have to raise taxes, uh, to help contribute towards that. But I know the city, everybody works really hard on, on everything we're doing and getting this done. It's probably one of the most important things that we do as council, so thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. All right, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five E, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0614, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, for Cookville Regional Medical Center. Says, uh, Tommy Renee, but she's not here, so. Is that you, Brenda?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Ms. Emel.
Again, this is, um, second reading. We've made no changes since first reading. Um, for their budget, we are appropriating, um, total revenue of 48, um, $450,369,000, operating expense of $425,000, $425,952,000, and they are projecting to have net income next year in their budget of $7,509,000. And again, their capital that's included in the budget, $37,926,000. Uh, no changes since first reading. Again, you had work sessions where you went over it in detail, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Uh, this is also a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak to the Cookville Regional Medical Center budget? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing. Um, I would like to say that, I know with our budget, we were able to do a pay increase for employees, and with the hospital budget, they were able to do an increase as well. So I think that shows the commitment that the city has to, to the employees. So I'm glad we were able to do that for both. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Emel. Five F, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0406, request to close, abandon, and declare surplus property, a portion of an undeveloped right-of-way for Fifth Avenue located off North Willow Avenue. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, again, this is the second reading. We have, uh, received no calls or comments, or no changes to the ordinance. Uh, recommend approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
Not big if you do with this, like, Fifth Street, you know, but this is a random avenue.
Never, never came to be.
Thank you. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, five G, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0407, to rezon property at 1331 South Maple Avenue, Tax Map 66, parcel 104.00, from RS 10, single-family residential, to RS 7.5, single-family residential. Mr. Ward.
Um, we've received no calls or comments, um, Mayor and council. There have been no changes to the ordinance. I recommend approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five H, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0408, to rezon property located at State Street and Bobby Avenue, Tax Map 53P, Group A, Parcel 26.00, from RS 10, single-family residential, to CR Regional Commercial. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And again, no changes, no calls or comments. I recommend your approval on second and final readings.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five I, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0411, to rezon the Dogwood Park area, Tax Map 53G, Group C, Parcel 4.00, 6.00, 7.01, 8.00, 10.00, 11.00, 14.00, 15.00, and a portion of 4.01, and Tax Map 053F, Group F, Parcel 1.00, from CL Local Commercial to CBD Central Business District. Mr. Ward.
And the mayor and council. It's a lot of zero-zero, but.
Took them out.
I did contact the property owners as I reported at first reading. We've had no calls or comments since, uh, since first reading was approved. Uh, recommend your approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Everybody did get noticed on this that was involved.
We noticed everybody as, as usual, but council has specifically asked me to have, reach out to some of the property owners, and we did that, and we didn't receive any comments from them negative for the reason.
Thank you again for that, yeah. Uh, any more discussion? All right, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five J, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0409, to establish zoning in the Putnam County Fairground Annexation Area, SCR Regional Commercial. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As council approved at our last meeting, uh, the annexation of the fairgrounds was effective as, as of approval of the resolution by owner consent. Um, this is second and final reading, that established zoning in that newly annexed area. We received no calls or comments. I recommend approval on final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
That's wrong. Sorry. All votes correct?
Yes.
Five. Vote, five. Love the motion carries.
Thank you. James on the fair board.
Yeah, I know.
Tell you what it is.
Life's on the fair.
Yes, it's on the fair board. Goodness. Five K, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-24-0410, to establish zoning in the Nelson North Drive Annexation Area, as RM8, multifamily residential. Mr. Ward.
Yeah, Mayor and council, this is our newly annexed area off North Drive, but determined to spec. Uh, there have been no changes to the ordinance, uh, since first reading. Uh, you know, no calls or comments. I recommend approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
Green.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And the last of, uh, all business, five L, consider awarding bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Gateway Monument Sign. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Um, the city received bids on Monday, June 3rd, for the Gateway Monument Sign project that has been developed in partnership with Tennessee Tech University. This project would install two signs, one at the eastbound off-ramp of I-40 and South Willow Avenue, and another at the eastbound on-ramp of I-40 and South Jefferson Avenue. Two bids were submitted for the project. Uh, these bids were evaluated by our architect, Upland Design, who recommended we accept a low bid from HD Homes, uh, for $720,000. Um, I have some maps depicting the proposed locations. You guys have seen these. Um, this is our Willow Avenue map. This is our Jefferson Avenue location. Here is a rendering of the signs that are proposed to be, uh, constructed. I know council did have some questions and postponed this at first reading. I asked, uh, Dr. Odom to attend our work session. Uh, I hope folks have gotten their, uh, questions answered relative to that. So, uh, we, we recommend council approve the low bid and, uh, as, as also recommended by Upland Design, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with HD Homes for construction. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Thank you for the extra work. I really appreciate that. You're like, yeah, above and beyond.
These are impressive. I'm excited.
Mm-hmm, it's going good. Anybody else?
We know, John, that we did the emblems for the university and the, um, city seal are not included in the 720, so we'll be purchasing those separately. The numbers you got for that, John, are 20,000 for the.
19,000 for bronze and aluminum. Um, that can be painted as bronze, right, is around 13, 14,000, I believe, are the two options for the four seals. Now, the applied artwork was omitted, uh, for those two seals from the bid package, as recommended by Upland Design in the, in the, uh, project development phase. So we, we have received one quote, uh, at this point, and we'll be.
It'll be similar to what's behind me. It's what it would look like for our seal. Um.
They're three feet in diameter, so.
Well, make sure you guys knew we were going to have, we're going to purchase that, um, to be included with this, that, uh, the Johnson Group would sell for.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second, don't we? Yes, okay, go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Consent agenda, six A, consider additional cost to mast arm for 10th Street widening project from 3/21/24. Six B, consider approval of pricing adjustment on transformer bid approved by the city council on 11/17/22. Six C, consider approval of pricing adjustment on transformer bid approved by the city council on 7/6/23. And six D, consider awarding bids for chemicals. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by, uh, Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. We'll go ahead. Any discussion with council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. New business, seven A, consider resolution R-24-0615, to acquire by donation, negotiation, or eminent domain, if necessary, certain land rights relating to the South Willow Avenue-West Jackson Street Intersection Improvement Project. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, this resolution would authorize the city manager, um, to acquire any necessary right-of-way and easements for the South Willow Avenue-West Jackson Street Intersection Improvement Project. This project will install dual northbound left turn lanes on South Willow Avenue and a dedicated eastbound right turn lane on West Jackson Street. At the May 2nd, 2024 council meeting, council approved an amendment to the city's contract with Kimley Horn for right-of-way acquisition services for this project. Um, and this resolution would allow us to move forward with, with the acquisition, um, as authorized by council. Now, I've got some illustrations. This is, uh, some of the grade plans, lining grade plans for this, uh, the layout views of how this is, uh, proposed to look. This is our exhibit, uh, for the right-of-way acquisition here. So, uh, this project is funded with STBG funding with the state of Tennessee, uh, providing the required 20% match. Uh, I recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public on this? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider approval of the implementation of a Tennessee Department of Agriculture/Forestry grant received by the Cookville General Federation of Women's Club for the creation of a food forest and foraging path in city parks. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, council. Uh, Mayor and council, uh, I'm excited about this project, uh, these next couple of projects that I'm going to be talking to you about. But, uh, the, um, Tennessee, or the Cookville Junior Women's Club, led by, uh, project leader on this was Sid Bundy with the Cookville Junior Women's Club, who came up with this idea and, uh, proposed this and wrote the grant. And, uh, this is a terrific project that supports, um, that helps us in our parks. Um, and it's a $250,000 forestry, forestry grant secured by the, uh, Cookville Women's Club. Uh, the purpose is to establish a food forest and foraging path over four years in city parks, specifically Kane Creek Park and also West End Park. Um, it covers uh, three to five acres of the 31 acres, or it will cover three to five acres, or be planted, designed and planted in three to five acres of the 31 acres. Uh, the Cowan property that we purchased and, uh, not too long ago, and we will be, um, adding as, uh, an addition to Kane Creek Park. Um, these areas will be carefully landscaped in sections or guilds, uh, and have pre-groupings. Uh, it, it gives us the opportunity, it adds interest to the park, it gives us educational opportunities, and also special event opportunities with, uh, food forests. The grant pays for, uh, the design of these areas. It pays for the tree purchases, uh, and maintenance for the first four years, and it's just a great addition for us to be able to, we already had trees, uh, in our plans already for that addition to go around the trails that we're creating. Uh, this is just a, a wonderful enhancement. I, I thank Sid Bundy and the Women's Club for initiating the project. Um, this gives you an idea, just some photographs of what food forests look like. Um, there's a, a variety of, um, plantings that go in each of these areas. You'll see one, uh, suggested planting down there on the second picture. Uh, it's not a huge area. We would have two or three of these areas, and they could be themed, they could be a variety. One could be for kids, they could be a variety of different things. Uh, another idea of what food forests look like, you can see pathways going through there. That's what we would be doing, particularly at, um, at Kane Creek Park in that addition. So I'm very excited about that. Um, it pays for grants or pays for trees that we're, that we need to plant there anyway. Um, so I would, uh, recommend your approval of, um, accepting or implementing this grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
So this is $250,000. Over four years to go do stuff that we were going to do a measure of anyway.
Right.
That's a good deal.
That's a great deal.
Well, thank you to the Cookville Junior Women's Club for spearheading that.
I'm excited about this.
That's great.
Can you expound at this point on what types of, uh, trees and vegetation are going to be planted, or that you envision be planting?
Well, there, there'll be a variety. Of course, you have the, the tall, the understory trees, you have bushes, you know, berry bushes and that sort of thing. It's, it's, some of them, most of them will, um, I think it's like 80% uh, have to be produc- producing some sort of edible or some sort of, uh, consumable, I should say. So, uh, trees that produce sap also can be included in there. So you can get elm trees or, or sugar maples, or those kinds of things that, um, provide you that, uh, you know, this, the tall, secure, uh, or, uh, shade trees and that sort of thing in there. So it, it will be designed by a landscape architect, um, and that will be done with community input.
Great.
And I might get a comment. Hopefully, there'll be trees and bushes that are native to this area.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is going to be a great project, great, great addition to Kane Creek, yes, and we'll start taking requests for trees and bushes here, it sounds like. Um, any other comments from the council? Okay, go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five G, consider approval of implementation of a Tennessee Tech University Rural, Rural Reimagine Research Grant, creating a downtown exhibit unique to Cookville. Mr. Woods.
Yes, I'm very excited about this project as well. This brings people to our downtown area. This will bring people to our downtown area and create some interest. Um, this is, uh, this is a project that was initiated by and, um, the grant written by Dr. Colleen Messire, who is here with us tonight. Um, she's with the university, along with Dr. Amy Hill and, uh, others with the university came together to create this or to write this, uh, Reimagine Research Grant, which was funded and has already been, um, started and, and basically completed. The next step of that, however, is to finish the project with, uh, some downtown installation of art projects. So, um, this is patterned after the, uh, Greenville, South Carolina Mice on Main, um, project. And if you've ever seen that, you can, if you haven't seen that, I suggest you look it up. It's a really cool thing, uh, that they've done there and, and creates interest in their downtown. What has happened with this project is, um, through Dr. Messire and, and others, they got. What has happened with this project is through Dr. Messire and, and others, they got students, creative writing students at Tennessee Tech to write a book that they have now published. Dr. Messire has copies here, prototype copies, that she can show you. But they're really cool books, and it tells a little story. And Ellie the Elephant actually goes and goes through our downtown area, starts at the Cream City Ice Cream Shop, goes to the depot, goes downtown, ends up, not ends up, but goes to Poets on the Square, and then back, ends up back at the Cream City area. And so, there is a little mystery there. It encourages families to, together, go look for these little sculptures that we would put along the pathway at businesses and at city facilities. And that's where we come to you to, to ask for your permission and your blessing to create or to install some of these sculptures. They would be six to eight inch tall little elephants with ice cream stacked, ice cream cones with ice cream stacked on those ice cream cones. And that would be part of what these individuals would try to find, families and children would try to find as they go on this scavenger hunt through downtown Cookeville. A really terrific project. Again, I thank Dr. Colleen Messire, but we are asking your approval to place these sculptures at agreed-upon locations in city facilities, such as Performing Arts Center, Dogwood Park, Depot Museum, that would help us complete, help the, the project, complete the project going forward.
I'd love to see one of those books.
Yeah, there's little signs here that have been created and, uh, nice renderings of city facilities.
I got two kids, they're gonna fight over this.
Yeah.
We'll give them that.
But you will be illustrated. The rest of them just sketches.
Right. Thank you.
But I would recommend your approval, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion?
Absolutely.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Baji, and, and Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public on this? Discussion from council?
Yeah, okay.
I adore these and prefer the paper copies myself. Will there be a phone version of this as well for folks, an electronic version?
Uh, we haven't, we haven't discussed that. I mean, these would be for sale, so I don't know.
It would be a revenue generator.
Yeah.
A lot.
These would be at the visitor bureau.
They would be at the visitors bureau. Friends of the depot will, will help coordinate all of that and get more of these published.
They could buy the app, too, just to make, you make it more coverage.
Yeah.
These are great.
These are really good.
I love it.
Thank you.
Possibly.
Yeah, very excited about all the possibilities with it. And yeah, as a mom of two small kids, gonna wait to make them go search for things, because they certainly can't find stuff at our house. So, hopefully, they can find these things out in the city. So, it's gonna be really great.
No, nothing to find in the middle of the street, right?
That's right.
But my kids might be in the, I apologize if they are. All right, any more discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider approval of a contract with Kimley Horn for the final design and bid documents for outdoor pickle courts, pickleball, oh, pickleball courts, yeah, at Kane Creek Park. Mr. Woods.
Counsel, thank you, mayor. Counsel, as you know, we are, have been in the process of developing outdoor pickleball courts, dedicated outdoor pickleball courts at Kane Creek Park. We have a preliminary design on an eight-court battery. We have secured grading plan and stormwater plan previously. Public Works is currently working on that. We also have a lighting plan, thanks to the Energy Department. That is complete. What we lack at this point is specific construction documents and bid documents. And this contract, Kimley Horn submitted a proposal to provide this final design elements and the bid specifications for $19,700, and I would recommend your approval and request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven A, consider approval of 2024 Wellness Screening Program Agreement. Mr. Sales.
Trying to give me help, that's fine. Mayor, council, as we have done for many years in the past, our Human Resources Department tonight is simply seeking your approval for this year's annual wellness screening program. As you know, this program is a partnership between the city and the Cookeville Regional Medical Center. And the benefit is, is that it offers a wide variety of screenings, medical screenings, at no cost or deeply discounted cost to city employees, enabling possible life-threatening diseases or illnesses to be caught in an early stage, as, as opposed to not being caught. So, we are asking you to approve the program, and we're also asking you to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote.
Mayor, if I could, I want to recognize, this will be Carl's last meeting with us.
Yeah.
Appreciate all he's done for the city of Cookeville, not only with, as his role as, as the director of our HR department, but also for his many years, many years of service with our police department. But Carl has asked to the city, and he will be missed. Just want to take this opportunity to thank him for his years of service.
Thank you, boss.
Yes, we'll, we'll say we get a vote for you here for your last, your last item. We have a, we have a motion in a second, so we will go ahead and take a vote.
Let's just be clear, we're voting for this, not Carl, right?
We're not.
One in a second.
Yes.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Sales.
Thank you, folks. It's been a pleasure.
Enjoyed, thank you.
Thank you.
Seven F, hold a public hearing on the storm water management program and consider on first reading ordinance O 24, zero, six, one, eight, amending Title 14, chapters five, seven, and eight of the Cookeville Municipal Code pertaining to erosion control, storm water management, repair and, now, see, made me nervous about saying it. Buffer zones. I did, yeah. Public Works Department, Mary Beth Elrod.
Okay, council, mayor, this is the proposed changes that have resulted from the new TDEC small MS4 permit requirements. Those TDEC permit requirements took effect in 2022. We were allowed a two-year maximum implementation process. We came up with an implementation plan and then started reviewing and looking at our current ordinances based on TDEC's new guidelines. TDEC has since, in the past two years, put out guidance documents. We've had several meetings with engineers, contractors looked at this, several discussions with TDEC, attended several meetings to understand these new ordinance changes and implementation. And these are our recommendations for the ordinance changes. Chapter five of the Erosion Control Ordinance, it updates some minor changes that resulted from our recent TDEC audit in March or February. And then the chapter seven, Storm Water Management, gets the most significant changes to the post-construction permanent storm water design for new developments and redevelopments. These changes affect the water quality treatment volume that are defined for projects. This will require more significant water quality treatment and volumes, depending on the selection process that the engineer and developer make, on what kind of system they want to put on their site. And it also affects how they upkeep and maintain their projects perpetually with these systems. It redefines the water quality treatment volume. It also recommends that we add and adopt the water quality treatment volume table that put, that TDEC put out in their MS4 ordinance, and to add and adopt the treatment train calculations in that. And so, this is the chart we're gonna be adding for a selection for engineers and developers, depending on what type of system they choose for their site. It will show what type of water quality volume they would be required to design by for their project. The repair and zone buffer ordinance, chapter eight, it updates the buffer zone language to match the construction zone buffers for impaired and unimpaired streams. It also requires changes to the discharge of water into the buffer zones to be sheet flow only. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. But this is for the first reading of this ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing portion. Would anyone like to speak on this agenda item for repair and buffering zones? Seeing none, we'll close. Any discussion from council? Except Chad.
So, any ongoing current projects that are in the queue? Is there like, when this goes into effect, have we decided what that hard date is?
Yes, so TDEC says that we have to have these enacted by September 1. So, I believe John Ward and I have discussed any projects in the queue before September 1 are grandfathered in, and that would be that they've already gotten on the agenda or gone before the planning commission, and they've already been at a site review meeting and, and/or either one. I know some of them are in the planning queue, and some of them are already in the site design queue.
Any other discussions?
To be clear, TDEC is imposing this.
Yes, this is all TDEC. This comes from the Clean Water Act from the federal government. So, it's the EPA coming down to TDEC, coming down to us.
We get.
Not, yeah, not, it's not wrong, it's not, okay. Any more, yeah, any more discussion? All right, we'll take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider on first reading ordinance O 24, zero, six, 19, replacing Title 13, Chapter 1, Section 13, 107, pre-ordinance of the Cookeville Municipal Code. Ms. Elrod.
The Tree Board requests your approval, Councilor Mayor, for the amendments to the Tree Board ordinance. They have updated some new department names and positions and some practices for tree pruning. If you have any questions, please let me know. And this is for passing on the first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Real quick, while we're on trees, I want to brag on Mary Beth and the initiative being taken over in one of our main corridors over on Neal Street. It's not finished, it's a, it's a work in progress, but thank you for the efforts being made over there. And then this fall, it's really gonna be made to shine. So, thank you for that.
And, and we are gonna lean heavy on the Tree Board for this, recommendations to make that corridor shine, and any others that you would like to put in front of the Tree Board. We can have them assess, see what the recommendations are.
No, yeah, this is a board that kind of, that's what, need a little love and attention, need a little pruning.
Yeah.
And, yes. Yes, and fertilizer. So, I appreciate y'all, y'all taking the initiative and the effort to, to really get this ramped up, because I think it's gonna have value.
If people want to have trees considered in public right-of-way or near, near properties of theirs, who should they go?
They would call our urban forester at the Public Works Department, Ms. Jamie Noonan. Yes, and then she can assess that, and if she needs recommendations from the Tree Board, or if we need to ask the Electric Department. The Electric Department also has a forester on staff for any trees within the electric lines.
Thank you. Any more discussion from the council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider approval to purchase one Kenworth T380 dump truck utilizing the statewide bid contract number 209, contract ID 0806, 080066. Ms. Elrod.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is for the purchase of a Kenworth T380 dump truck from our statewide contract. It will be used by our street maintenance department. This is to get our current dump truck allocated and prepared for the winter season. This dump truck is assembled, it does not have a bed on it, and if we order now, get our name on it, it will get assembled with the bed and be to us, us by late August in order to be ready for the winter season, so we can dedicate one of our other dump trucks for a snowplow. And the purchase price for this on the statewide contract is $147,745. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Mayor, we should note that this will be paid for out of next year's budget. What we're doing here is allowing Mary Beth to order the truck. So, this is funded out of next year's budget, the one that you adopted that becomes effective July 1st.
Thank you for clarifying.
We want to get above everyone else, since we aren't gonna have that first July meeting, and we don't want all the other cities and counties to steal our truck.
Put their name on it.
Proactive.
Tag, nice. Any more discussion? All right, we'll take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven I, consider approval to purchase one Mack MD7 dump truck utilizing the Sourcewell purchasing contract. Ms. Elrod.
Again, Councilor Mayor, this is for the purchase of a Mack dump truck in the 2025 fiscal year budget. This is purchased through the Sourcewell contract. This will be for our concrete crew, and this is to replace an older dump truck that will be modified and dedicated to a, a, a sock, a snowplow, sock, sock truck. And this purchase price for this truck is $118,459.42. This truck is not produced yet. This will get it into production for a late November delivery for the 2025 year. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All right, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven J, consider approval of annual payment for in-car body worn camera system. Mayor Winfrey.
Mayor and council, let's see here. We have a five-year contract with Axon for our body, body worn cameras and our fleet cameras and unlimited cloud storage. This is year five of that contract, and the payment is $138,384. This is a budget item, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven K, consider approval of lease agreement for four 2024 police motorcycles. Mayor Winfrey.
Mayor and council, this is a lease agreement for four police motorcycles with Boswell's Harley-Davidson. The lease covers a three-year period, and the annual payment is $13,597.92. This is a budgeted item, and I recommend your.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven L, consider awarding bid for 2024 water line leak survey service. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, we took bids for leak survey, leave two bids. I will apologize, it appears like I may have had slides mixed up for item six D in this one, because this is a chemical bid. But anyway, Richards Leak Management Company has been doing this for several years for us. They're the low bid at $130 a mile, and this is a two-year contract, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
All votes.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven M, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a sewer, a city sewer extension cost share agreement with Donnie Meadows to extend sanitary sewer on Bill Smith Road. Mr. Turner. Bill Smith Road. Mr. Turner.
This drawing shows in green the parcel that Donnie Meadows owns there on Bill Smith Road. We're looking to extend sewer from West Cemetery Road out to Holiday Road. This project would serve 34 carousels. We've reached an agreement with Donnie Meadows to contribute $75,000 to this project, and our opinion to approve on this.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All right, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. And seven N. Consider approval of engineering contract for the design of sanitary sewer for the Bill Smith Road area. Mr. Turner.
This engineering contract was with Clinton Engineering for $29,500, and it's for the design of the project that we discussed there, the cost share agreement. May I have your approval?
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, seconded by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Take a vote.
I pressed it.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda portion of our meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to the city council on non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. If you would come step to the podium, tell us your name, if you live in the city or county, and we'll limit you to three minutes, and go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Kim Kettles. I've been displaced by the city because of the water project. I've been looking for a place for three months. I've looked in Cookeville, Gainesboro, Sparta, Allgood, Baxter. I can't find anything. I've, I've applied for housing. I was number nine. I've been moved to number 12. I just don't know what to do anymore. Not everybody in the city makes six figures. I need some kind of affordable housing. And, you know, you're putting out all this money. Is there any way you can put something out for some kind of a building for us that have been displaced? I've spoken to the other people in the other building that was displaced, and they're not happy about it either. They were going to come, but I didn't get anyone to support me today. But I just don't know what else to do. Channel 5 already knows about it. I'm thinking about getting an attorney.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to city council? Any announcements from council? I know our next meeting, July 4th, will be canceled for the holiday, so we will meet again on the 21st?
18.
18. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I can do math. Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, meeting is adjourned.